Hello, everybody. Welcome to the District of Squamish Committee of the Whole for April 27. I am Councilor Janet Stoner, an acting mayor for the month of April, so I will be chairing this meeting. Hot spot increased with the Squamish community. We are fortunate to be meeting on the traditional MCA territory of the Squamish Nation today. We have already adopted the agenda, but we need to adopt Ministerial Order M192, which is pursuant to Ministerial Order M192. The District of Squamish is excluding any person of public attendance at this April 27 meeting on the basis that full public attendance in a manner consistent with the public headquarters and recommendations cannot be accommodated at this time. The district is ensuring openness, transparency, and accessibility and accountability at this meeting by the following means. The meeting is being livestreamed and a video of the meeting will be available on the district's website following or viewing on a on-demand basis. If somebody moved that. Moved by Councilor French, seconded by Mayor Elliott. Any opposed? Motion carries. We're also meeting electronically, council, so I'm going to read a portion of our electronic participation policy. Just to remind council of the following circumstances. That please advise the chair when a council member disconnects or reconnects with meetings that this can be recorded in the minutes. Council members are to identify themselves when they want to be placed on the speakers list by either raising their hand or just saying chair if they're on audio only. With respect to a vote, council members are only required to state in a vote. Council members shall be put, shall put their telephone or computer on mute unless they wish to speak, and that goes for staff and externals as well. Council members shall be involved in and participate in the meeting. Council members shall text the CAO, or today it's the proper officer, if they're having any technical difficulties with their telephone or computer. The meeting will be recessed for up to 10 minutes if a technical difficulty occurs on the district side. And with that, we will move on to 5-1 on our agenda, which is the filming policy amendments. I believe I'm handing over to Ms. Dicker.
Thank you, council. I'm just going to share my screen. Just waiting for permission to do so. Okay, thank you, council, for your time this afternoon. My name is Sarah Dicker, and I am the Acting Manager of Arts and Culture for the District of Squamish. And I'm here today to present proposed filming policy amendments for council's consideration. So the objective is to gain council's endorsement of the proposed amendments to the District of Squamish film policy. And today we're going to be, sorry. Today, we're going to be discussing a summary of the changes, which includes introduction of a third-party film liaison service, and the introduction of language around an aviation film liaison service, and also the smoke bluffs filming representative. In relation to filming in the Smoke Bluff Park, as well as the introduction of drone language, which was currently, was previously absent from the policy. We'll then be looking at the next steps, recommended motion, and also questions and comments from council. So the three types of film liaison service, as previously mentioned, are a general film liaison service, which is a third party utilized by the district to increase customer service to both the film industry and the community, and provide boots-on-the-ground guidance, oversight, and audit during, after, and before filming activities. The aviation film liaison is being introduced as a third-party service utilized by the district to assist with the supervision of filming activities at the Squamish Municipal Airport, or as a consultant where drone or remote pilot aircraft are being used. And this individual will have specialist aviation expertise, and will be able to liaise with the applicant, the airport tenants, and the District of Squamish in relation to filming activity at the airport or involving the use of drones. The third type of film liaison service that will be utilized is the appointed representative of the Smoke Bluff Park Committee. And this individual will assist responding to film inquiries, coordinating park liaisons. And basically, their purpose is to assist with the stewardship of the park and the established guidelines in the Smoke Bluff Park Management Plan, as well as to protect important community-climbing assets and infrastructure within the Smoke Bluff Park. So the film liaison is an intermediary body that works on behalf of the district to provide support, guidance, and community insight to help visiting productions navigate the unique aspects of filming within our community. Liaison keeps lines of communications open between the public, the district, and also the industry who are visiting, and helps to provide onsite guidance and direct productions within, within the permitting, unique permitting aspects of each production. And so the liaison is going to also help mitigate impact and provide audit to ensure compliance with the permits. And just as a caveat, this person is a neutral body and will not have any involvement with negotiation with businesses or on compensation rates. The film liaison's role will not have an explicit mandate to help or facilitate local economic developments. However, staff believe that this will be a positive outcome of increased customer service and on-the-ground assistance to productions. So this chart shows the filming impact levels from zero to high alongside some of the considerations that staff contemplate when determining impact on the community and permitting requirements for each production, such as traffic, the location within the district, public interaction or disruption, impact on businesses, and the use of the airport or drones in filming activities. Given the variability of the types of productions that visit Squamish, it is important for staff to have an option to utilize the film liaison service when deemed in the best interest of the district. The liaison service is proposed to be utilized when there is a high level of filming impact on the community, and will be determined by the manager of arts and culture when the level is at a medium on the chart. So we also moved to implement some language surrounding drones, giving an increase in remote-piloted aircraft systems within applications, as well as providing clarity on recreational use within the district. And so the, there was a need for clarity and also a need to implement the ability for staff to charge for the aviation consultant's review as required, as this can be costly to district staff budget. And so the next steps that staff will proceed with prior to council's approval of the amendments presented will be to run an RFP, so a request for proposals for a film liaison service provider, and after which we will establish fees and charges and implement a rate within the bylaw. And we also look to bring forward a municipal ticketing information bylaw update, as well as a notice enforcement bylaw update to allow us to find for noncompliance. And so this will be a tool that will be able to be used by staff, as well as the liaison, in audit and, and control of productions. And then the recommended motion for council today is that council approve the filming policy amendments as presented at the Committee of the Whole on April 27, 2021. And I'll now go back to council for any questions or comments you may have.
Thank you for the presentation, Ms. Dicker. I have Councilor French. Go ahead.
Thanks, Chair. Touched on in the staff presentation, but I'm wondering if we could dig a little deeper into it. 7.4 within the staff report reads, "No recreational RPA flights, RPAS flights are permitted on District of Squamish property, including parks and trails." So my question is, does this relate to filming? And how?
Thank you through the chair. Thanks for your question, Councilor French. We have had an increase in requests to film on district property and the use of drones in recreational, for recreational purposes. There is a bit of a blurry line where it comes to recreation and commercial use of drones. However, we want people to come and apply through the district so that we can evaluate which category it falls into. In terms of filming drone, drone use on district property, it's not something that we're permitting at this point for concerns with public privacy and general usership of the parks and enjoyment of our parks or property. If somebody did want to proceed with booking an area and using a drone for filming for their recreational property, or sorry, for their recreational purposes or commercial purposes, that is something that we could look into, but we would have to look into a booking of the area for that specific purpose.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Councilor Anderson.
The policy manual that is included in our, in your staff report includes a policy number three. I'll cite it, "Encouraging the Development of Business Industry and Expertise in Squamish to Support the Film Industry." Now, Ms. Dicker, you have explained that the film liaison services will not have an explicit mandate for economic development benefits, if you like, I'm paraphrasing you. But I wondered whether a directory might be contemplated, or has already been contemplated. A few years ago, a local industry participant took some initiative towards this and had quite a significant response. It hit the media, and there were a lot of inquiries from people and businesses seeking to enter into the industry. So I'm wondering whether that may be a consideration for the film liaison services or otherwise to produce that directory, which might include reference to educational institutions for people wishing to prepare themselves for, for the industry.
Thank you, Councilor Anderson, through the chair. At this time, this film liaison service is aimed at reducing and enhancing, reducing the impact on the community, that's the negative impacts on the community of filming when they come to town, as well as assisting with the film industry who are visiting and helping them process. Usually, film industry have already established contracts with food services, and they'll generally bring them with them and other services too. However, moving forward, this may be something that economic development and arts and culture staff work to provide a directory of local businesses that could be used by anyone, not just the film industry. But at this time, the service is more aimed at being onsite, being present, and mitigating any impact on the community. And, and as we move forward, it might grow into something else. But right now, it's something that staff are having trouble with providing in terms of the fluctuation of the industry and the commitment of time being onsite and providing these services. So, so that's what we're looking at right now, but it could evolve into something more as we establish and grow and, and continue along this path.
Thank you very much, Ms. Dicker.
Council, any further questions?
Yeah, a few things. The, the rules around drones, they mention on private property, on district property, and trails and so on. But what does that mean? I assume that doesn't refer to where the operator is standing, but it refers somehow to airspace. And I assume there's a limit to how high our jurisdiction goes in airspace, or can you speak to that a bit?
Thank you for your, for your question and through the chair. The, the regulations for drone use are actually set out by Transport Canada. And so they regulate based on the size of the drone, how high you can fly, areas within the radius of the airport. They, they create all of the, of the regulations around the use of drones. And so we speak to private property and public property in terms of recreational use. We're looking at drones under a certain weight and not flying above a certain height and only filming on that private property. When, when the drones become of a, of a certain weight and a certain, you know, they, they, they go into another category, which basically requires a license from Transport Canada and would require the review of the aviation consultant. So hopefully that, that clarifies. Please let me know if you have a follow-up. I don't know if I hit the nail on the head precisely there.
Well, I was just trying to understand if we are trying to regulate a portion of the airspace, and it sounds like we are. But this wouldn't preclude me then if I had permission from a private property owner alongside a district trail. You know, I could sort of fly along a flight path and still have a great sightline and essentially film activity on the trail as long as I wasn't technically directly over. Is that correct or no?
Go ahead, Ms. Dicker.
Thank you, Councilor Penningill. We would not allow the, the filming of public property unless permitted. So you would need a film permit and a license for that, for that filming.
Okay, and, and then following up on Councilor French's question about this being in the context of filming, if you're a startup or you're doing things in terms of not filming, but other technologies and other uses and so on, or even recreationally playing around with some of these things, like learning about swarming or whatever it is you want to be doing, would this, would these regulations apply to you, or does it only apply when you're using the drone for recreation or commercial filming?
I'm not, sorry, through the chair. I'm going to pass that over to Ms. Guest for, for answer.
Good afternoon, council. We will continue to take advice and direction from Transport Canada as it relates to their overall commercial regulations and, and advice in, in what is still fairly a new and emerging bit of technology specifically for the major motion picture industry.
But if I was sort of just playing around with some AI-type stuff or sort of messing around, would I have to pay attention to these regulations if I'm flying, you know, a drone that's under 250 grams? And, you know, I have permission to stand on, on the private property. Would this, would these rules apply to me? Because I'm not like trying to film anything.
Yeah, so, so the good news is, is that this is, this is the nuances why we have an aviation consultant. And that in, outside of Transport Canada's kind of like really clear guidelines, and staff are not in a, in a position to speak directly to the interpretations of Transport Canada. And so thankfully, we can, we can rely on them and their permitting process as long as the individual steps forward and asks those clarifying questions to the arts and culture manager for consideration.
Okay. I guess just one other topic, and it's not one of the changes, so I don't know if it's offside. But I did notice in terms of insurance, we put a cap on maximum insurance, and I can understand having a minimum. I'm just wondering why we'd have a maximum on insurance in our policy. Item three.
Through the chair, sorry. I'm thinking that this is language that, that kind of just flowed through from the old policy. It says a minimum of 5,000 and a maximum of 10,000. I'm sorry, 10 million.
Ms. Arthur's here, who will speak to it.
And it is, we, we did receive advice from our insurer and when we developed the policy originally, and that was, they didn't think that we needed more than the 10 million.
Okay.
Yes, you have something to add?
If I could also add to that is that when production companies come to town, they're, they are also looking for assurance in which though their insurance maximums are going to be considered underneath the permit so that they can, in turn, pay appropriate rates for their general liability and risk.
Thank you, that's helpful context. Council, any further questions? I have one, and then I'll go back to Councilor French. And I'm just curious, I know that this is something that we have kind of been managing in-house as we've been experiencing growth in our film industry. I'm just curious how much staff time this is currently taking up in terms of the liaison role? And how much, yeah, so how much staff time we're currently allocating to, to the film liaison role that can be freed up through this fee-for-service model? Go ahead, Ms. Dicker.
Thank you. I'm having a hard time fully hearing, but I, I think I'm going to have a stab at the question. Basically, at the moment, staff are unable to commit days at a time to be onsite, to be boots-on-the-ground and having that audit and oversight during production. For example, there may be a production downtown, which involves road closures or street lockups. And it's, at the moment, we're just unable to commit two or three days of the work week to, to being onsite and providing that, that oversight, as well as if we were to bring in a auxiliary or, or casual staff member to provide that service, they wouldn't have the level of expertise in the film industry or with our district policies as we would get through the procurement of this specialist film liaison staff member.
Thank you, I saw Ms. Guest's hand, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. If I, if I may provide some additional information, this is a highly variable industry. And so looking at staff time and taking out or, or replying with an equation, it is going to be quite difficult in terms of the amount of staff time it takes, given the variability and unpredictability of the industry. It is, as we know, predominantly a creatively-driven industry, and, and Squamish and its locations are, are not. You know, we could be, we could be very popular one year, and we could be very slow the next. And so the benefit of this liaison position is that it really does support the peaks and valleys that we do see in, in a changing industry. Since my time sitting in the chair, starting in 2013, there was, there was definitely cycles to the industry in terms of pilot season particularly. You might be familiar with the term in terms of when major network studios kind of shop around all of their pilots. And so there was a very kind of predictable and cyclical nature to the, to the industry that we have seen be turned on its head over the last 10 years with the, with the on-demand streaming services like Hulu and Netflix. So we'll stop there. That might be a little bit too much filming 101. But we're happy to dig in a little bit more specifically if council's interested in a more quantitative answer.
No, that's a helpful piece of context, so thank you. I have Councilor French, go ahead.
Thanks, Chair. Councilor Penningill's questions about insurance got me thinking back to my days as a testamental director when that event required $5 million third-party liability. And that was the amount in year one that I was involved, which was a long time ago. So, and then I think about two particular fatal filming accidents in our region. And that figure of $10 million has me wondering, is that adequate in today's dollars if that is an old figure? And should we periodically be looking at those minimums and maximums to make sure they're appropriate?
Go ahead, Ms. Dicker.
Thank you, through the chair. We do liaise quite often with, with the Municipal Insurance Association. And that, that level of insurance is adequate. However, usually, when film productions, bigger or larger-scale film productions come to visit Squamish, they actually provide over that, that threshold, and they will have insurance that is adequate for their activities. We do send each application's insurance through our staff member at Financial Services for Review and ensure that the appropriate level of insurance is provided for each production. And each production has different elements. So in terms of fire permits or special effects, we'll take that into consideration when we're reviewing the individual insurance.
Okay, thanks, Chair.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mayor Elliott. You're still on mute.
Like to move the staff recommendation.
Thank you, seconded by Councilor Harper. Any comments? Go ahead, Councilor Penningill.
You know, I, I think I do have some concerns that we're being a little too strict maybe around the drones and some of the things around there. I understand we're still learning, it's an evolving field, and so I'm willing to support this on, on that front. But that's my sort of area of hesitation, that we're not leaving enough flexibility there. Yeah, so just want to make that comment, thanks.
Thank you. I will, go ahead, Councilor Reese.
Thank you. Well, I think this is a good initiative. I have a friend that lives in an area that's frequented by film productions because of one or two particular attractions. And, and I think one of the advantages of this is having the liaison is it might kind of provide some consistency actually in the impacts. There's quite noticeable differences in the impacts between the different production companies, it seems, in the neighborhood, depending on who might be filming. And so, so I think this is the kind of thing that will help some of these neighborhoods and will provide some consistency and predictability around it as well. So a good initiative, I think. It is difficult, it's tricky with any kind of a job or profession where you, you have these peaks and valleys, and it's hard to have full-time staff doing that kind of stuff because at some point they have to leave their desk and go off and take care of this. So I think this is a good solution and certainly something to try out. I, I, I take the point about the insurance and seeing the maximum, but it sounds like the $10 million maximum is sometimes exceeded anyway, and there might be special circumstances. And, and you might just consider, you know, unless staff determine there are special circumstances, in which case it will be higher or something like that, just to, if there are significant special effects or something of that nature, to provide for that kind of avenue or a little bit of foresight for the production companies, that 10 million may not be the end of it if it's a significant production.
Thank you. I will just say that I'm happy to support this motion. I think that this is a great initiative, especially given the peaks and valleys that we do see with filming. That this will help both the industry in terms of giving them some clear insight on what our community expects. on what our community expects of these businesses. And then also in supporting our community to lessen the impact of filming. With respects to the drone component, I am happy to see it in there, but recognize that we are not the regulating authority on drones, that that is that is an area of jurisdiction under Transport Canada. So, there is still an allowance for recreational drone use under a certain weight. And above that, it is the authority of Transport Canada to manage that. So, appreciate that there's some language that starts to speak to it and give it some context for our community. But also appreciate the jurisdictional challenge there. I'm not seeing any other further comments, I will call the question, any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, thank you very much, Ms. Dicker, Ms. Guest.
Thank you, Counsel.
Doing well, Counsel? We are running ahead of time, but I think we do have the staff that we need for our next agenda item, which is the District of Squamish Employment Space and Land Research. I see Ms. Woodside is with us, I believe I'm handing it over to her. Welcome, Ms. Woodside.
I'm going to share my presentation. All right, is everyone able to see my presentation, okay?
Yes, you can, go ahead.
Okay, thanks. So hello, Mayor and Counsel, I'm Alicia Woodside, Economic Development Specialist here at the district. And today, I'm presenting a review of some recent employment space research. So, just as a quick background, I wanted to give a bit of context about some of the employment space research that's been done to date. So, to support economic development and policy decisions, the district's been investing quite heavily into employment space, both strategy and research over the past number of years. So, there was an employment land strategy done in March 2015. And then, in May of last year, an employment space demand model was completed and presented by Kate Mulder and Matt Gunn. And the model was essentially used to predict various amount of space that may be needed over time in various categories of employment space. And that was endorsed by Counsel and then used to inform the 2020 zoning bylaw update. And that was used to help project various supply of employment space forms. And so, that brings us to today. And while the model that was presented last year is very useful as a quantitative tool to project amount of space that's needed, it doesn't really tell us the characteristics of that space and how that would, and the exact types of space that could help support business growth. So, with this research we're presenting today, we wanted to fill those gaps and delve into some new research questions. So, and one key thing is we wanted to also deliver on a key action outlined in our Emerging Sector Roadmap and Action Plan, which identifies engaging with key industry stakeholders as a foundational cluster development strategy for this year. So as I mentioned, the goal of this research is to inform the characteristics of space and land that would be ideal to support business vitality in Squamish. Our intent is to share insights that enable policy, economic development, and private sector actions to help deliver on these needs. So, to allow for depth and detail, we conducted interviews with 64 different businesses. And they were ranging from 30 minutes to 45 and even in some cases, an hour. And we collaborated closely with community planning to develop the questions, just so that the eventual use sites would be useful for policy development. So, a quick water break. So, participating businesses included 15 firms seeking retail space, including tree food trucks, 15 businesses seeking office space, including two seeking childcare facilities, 23 companies seeking light industrial space, including three seeking kind of gym and fitness and climbing gym facilities, and 11 firms seeking medium industrial space. So, we also chose to include a few companies from the Lower Main Line and Whistler. In total, it was eight companies out of the 64. Just so that we could round out our participant mix, in some cases when we were lacking a few companies in key sectors that we really want to grow in Squamish. But that said, the majority in 56 companies were all from Squamish. I'll just take a moment to walk through some of the key insights. In the interest of time, you can refer to the top takeaways in the report for a detailed summary. So, to start, we heard that density is really bringing opportunity. Businesses with consumer-facing business models are very optimistic about upcoming residential density in Squamish and the opportunity that comes. And an example is a lot of businesses seeking retail space are very excited about downtown Squamish because of the residential densification there. It was also apparent that availability and affordability of employment space are key challenges. And this was across types of space. So affordability continues to kind of creep out of reach for many local businesses. And it often considerably limits the options that are available to them. And this is one area we plan to investigate further in our upcoming pro-pharma and business viability research, which we're presenting in a month, so May 25. And we also heard that businesses are evolving after, they're planning to evolve after the pandemic. So, after experimenting with working from home during the pandemic, many and especially office-based companies are planning to embrace more working from home and more flexible work policies in the long term. And so, just to walk through some of the key takeaways by type of space, we found that retail businesses are, they require a good location to be successful. And location was ultimately the key driver in what they're looking for in terms of space. Good locations need to have strong drivers of foot and/or vehicle traffic, whether it's generated from residential density, office density, or just being co-located near an anchor tenant or a busy shopping area. And this was applicable both for retail primary companies, but also for companies that have an accessory retail component, such as a brewery with a taproom or a coffee roaster with a coffee retail shop. Moving on to office, office-based companies tend to seek space that will support and enhance their employees' daily experience at work as their employees are often seen as their number one asset. These companies are seeking a base that is close to food and beverage services, interesting shops and amenities, and, you know, places that their workforce can walk to throughout the day, such as mountain biking trails, parks to walk their dogs, and et cetera. Light industrial businesses were really seeking flexibility as they often wished to accommodate several different business functions within the same space. And that could include anything from storage to production to retail and even office operations. As a result, they seek large open floor plans. And they often seek tall ceilings to accommodate taller equipment, vertical storage, and/or mezzanines. Many light industrial companies are really seeking flexibility to grow their accessory uses. And moving on to medium industrial, and this is largely about land. They seek a relatively large volume of land with the majority of space being kind of outdoor yard space, so over 60%. And that's for storage staging and accessibility for truck transport. And of course, these companies also require the ability to erect some structures on their land, often used as warehouse space and sometimes as office space as well. So I just rushed through that, but it's detailed in the report as well. And so, while early-stage companies weren't the focus of the research, there were a couple other insights that came out specific to early-stage companies. So, one, we heard that space sharing arrangements are very attractive for early-growth companies. And it essentially offers cost efficiencies and also an inspiring work environment with the opportunity to co-locate with like-minded businesses. Moving spaces is very expensive. And so, many companies, especially in the office category, are seeking a space that they can kind of grow into. And in turn, they are looking to sublease the additional space and then grow into it when they're ready. We also heard for early-stage businesses that in the food service and food processing sectors, access to affordable commissary kitchen space is a challenge. And this is a consistent finding we've heard from other engagement with the industry. And we'll be talking about that a little bit later in this presentation. So, what I'd like to focus on most in this presentation is on our next steps because while research produces interesting insights, it's really all about the actions we take and that's where the value lies. So, the three key streams are policy development, business programming, and future research. In terms of policy development, this research will serve as a key tool for future policy and bylaw development decisions. We haven't yet applied the findings to any specific planning processes, but we do plan to use a tool going forward for things like sub-area planning, rezonings, and possibly DPA guidelines or development permit area guidelines. We will also be creating a couple specific tools to help staff use these insights in their day-to-day work. One being employment space guiding principles and another being case studies. And so, to start with the guiding principles, the intent is to incorporate all of the district's relevant strategies, policies, and all the research completed to date, including upcoming research, and producing a set of guiding principles to inform consistent policy and decision-making. We'll also be creating case studies mostly for internal use to kind of bring our insights to life with concrete practical examples. In terms of business programming, this research surfaced several actions that could be taken as potential programming to support businesses. Some of these actions may be within the district's jurisdiction. Others might be more supported to a local community partner. And others may still be more effectively tackled by either the private sector or potentially another level of government. So, as a next step, we plan on creating a list of all these actions and exploring them for future potential. We may dedicate further staff time to pursuing those actions and we may return to Counsel if needed. So that's the next step there. One example of business programming that's already underway, I had mentioned a couple minutes ago that there is kind of a lack of affordable commissary kitchen space that we heard through this research. And a project that we're working on to address that already in the works is working on the creation of an asset-sharing tool. And it's specifically going to be for the food sector to start. And the intent is to create a tool that will help Squamish food, both like food service and food production companies, to find commercial kitchen spaces in town. And this might be even a restaurant kitchen space that's underused in off-hours. And so, the first iteration of this tool is kind of designed for the food sector, but we're hoping to kind of expand it to other sectors in future if this first pilot is successful. So that's just one example. And then finally, we also have future research planned to build on these insights with additional quantitative data. One key project that I've mentioned a few times is business viability research that's coming next month. And we're currently working on a toolkit similar to the employment space demand model that district staff can use to understand the viability of various district policy and development scenarios. So that'll be presented next month. And then, we're also planning to make some significant updates to the employment space demand model this year. For one, we plan to incorporate a neighborhood-level analysis feature so that we can help inform future neighborhood-level planning. And then, we also plan to improve the detail and accuracy of the model with new datasets. And we're also going to look at improving the user-friendliness of the tool, just to promote access within the district. So these are some upcoming milestones, just to put this into context, all of the work streams that I just discussed. Following this presentation today, our next step is presenting business viability research next month on May 25. And then, over the summer, we will be working across departments and in some cases with partner organizations to identify and explore a tactical list of actions that arise from the research. We will return to Counsel to present if needed at that time. And then, in the third and fourth quarter of this year, we intend to collaborate with community planning quite closely. And that's when we'll be developing the tools that I discussed, the case studies and the guiding principles to inform future planning processes and decisions. And then finally, we plan to finish our employment space upgrades by the end of this year. So with that, our staff recommendation is that the District of Squamish receive the April 27, 2021 report from Economic Development and endorse the next implementation steps as described in the report. And thank you for listening, I'd love to hear any questions and comments.
Thank you so much for the presentation, Ms. Woodside. Counsel, any questions? Counselor Anderson and Counselor French.
Thank you. Ms. Woodside, I was very glad to hear your reference to, to quote you, going forward, the research results and outcomes will be applied or to our sub-area plans and development peremptory guidelines. It's clear that there are many insights there that are of interest to those and these are immediately obvious. I'd like to ask then whether you might also consider sharing this research at some point with the Advisory Design Panel? My experience is that the Advisory Design Panel spends a good deal of their sessions addressing things like attributes, truck access, and a long list of locational or desired features and amenities. I wondered whether this had been given some consideration in a kind of a workshop, if you like, with the Advisory Design Panel?
Thank you, Counselor Anderson, through the Chair. So our plan is to firstly publish this research. I mean, it's been published in the Council Agenda, but we want to make it more accessible. So we're planning to have it on our website, feature it in RE News as well as all of our partners and try to kind of generate some awareness of information that way firstly. And then, during our collaboration with community planning, if we are, if the, say, development permit area guidelines come into review as part of that, then that would be something that we would bring to the ADP for their internal feedback at that stage.
Thank you. As a next question I had was you, your report highlights locational attributes. And through the feedback you've received with the people providing input, you have highlighted a few of them, but of course, it's not a complete list. And I'd like to refer to water dependency. And just ask whether you've given some consideration to kind of cataloging these types of locational attributes that are of interest, clearly is something of importance for transportation, forest industry, and tourism sector firms. Yes, we do have a marine action strategy underway, but that isn't referenced in the report. But have you given some consideration to considering water dependency as among those attributes that you take into account in your research presently?
Thank you again, and through the Chair, it's a great comment. And I think we should have referenced the marine gateway in our report to Counsel. I think in general, these insights will help inform marine planning and development in Squamish, although it wasn't necessarily a focus of the report. And then, I guess, we are working closely with community planning and with engineering on implementing the marine action strategy. with engineering on implementing the marine action strategy. So it's, you know, a tool that we have throughout going forward in our work with our other staff at the district.
Thank you. If I may, Chair, I have a third question. If I could proceed with it, and that is the medium industrial category of lands are particularly sensitive to locational preferences. And we can highlight neighborhood interface, size of parcel, truck access, water access. It seems as though it's clear that this is a category that may deserve some additional attention within that respect. Now, the OCP outlines the the plan to develop a forestry land strategy. And this encompasses a great number of firms and types of firms and takes into account a good number of these locational preferences to be considered. I wondered if this can be taken into account in further development of not only this project, but related ones to address that forestry land strategy.
Thank you again through the chair. We attempted to include a considerable number of forestry companies in this research as a core sector in Squamish. And as you know, if you've read the report, we had lots of a big communications campaign for many months as our main recruitment for the study. And the representation from forestry was low. So we sent out a lot of personalized email invites, tend to be specific. And we only did get one company responding even after the follow-up. So I think because we only had one forestry sector company participate, we didn't feel that this was representative to specifically, I guess, reference the forestry land strategy in the report. Thank you for the comment.
And thank you, Ms. Woodside and Chair. Maybe I'll come back later for comments on related matters. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Anderson. Counselor French.
Thanks, Chair. And from the report, we learned that staff plans to create a list of all the tactical actions identified in the report for further exploration. So I'm curious to know, by when is the list expected to be completed?
Through the chair. Thank you, Counselor French. I think if I refer to my slide with the milestones, I have it down for target completion date of the third quarter of 2021. So by the fall. And the reason being allowing a little bit more time for that is I do feel that there will be some relevance to other organizations, and it allows more time for engagement with other organizations. I do believe it won't just be district jurisdiction.
Okay, very good. My follow-up question was answered. Thanks.
Counsel, other questions? I had one, which was encouraging to hear that that there was some positive feedback around the densification and the opportunities that that's been bringing. I'm curious, just in terms of new development, we often have a little bit of a negotiation around phasing in a commercial space relative to you have to wait for there to be a right time that there is a vast kind of residential density around to support the commercial or retail. And I'm wondering if we're getting a sense at all of like, how much is enough density to support some of these types of commercial or retail? Or if it's just generally like a more residential density is generally positive?
Counselor, thank you for that question. I think it's a really good one. Through the chair. And I think I've been asked that question from staff as well. At this stage, it's more on a qualitative level, the insight that we have from this research. So it's kind of a little bit more on a business area level that we're able to hear from businesses saying, you know, this area is exciting and is viable for us right now. But I do think as part of our next steps, especially when we're looking at, you know, how can we use these insights for sub-area planning? I think we can try to distill from that some kind of more concrete application, looking at, you know, okay, what are those characteristics of those areas in terms of density that may make them viable?
That's helpful. Thank you. Right, Counsel, any further questions? And if not, there is a recommendation for us to consider. Go ahead, Counselor Peddingill.
I didn't have questions. I have comments. Or want to wait until after the resolution for that, or?
Move the resolution and then make comments?
Sure.
Unless your comments might change the resolution.
I don't think so.
So your Counselor Peddingill is moving. It's seconded by Counselor Herford. Go ahead.
Yeah, thanks. Very pleased to see the detailed analysis and some of the feedback in the report. I think something I've mentioned a few times that I was quite pleased to see is the recognition of a need for flexible space and that people don't need fancy space. They need space they can be very flexible with and do all kinds of creative things. I noticed the attention to desire for complementary businesses being able to share or co-lease. And I just want to reiterate with that, from what I've seen, they don't need to be related businesses at all. They could be completely in unrelated sectors and so on. It's just, hey, can we both operate in the same space? And that's all that's sort of really required. The other thing that jumped out at me is there was a number of references for people saying they want more parking or more parking would be helpful. And that's a piece where my personal feeling is we need to manage expectations, and there may need to be a bit of a conversation around there. I think, you know, cars are not required for business in general. I think they are required for certain businesses and business models. But, and you know, to date, towns have invested a lot of infrastructure and focus on those business models, and they have flourished. But I think we're at a time where we can't continue to do that. And it's an issue of capacity, cost of land, community well-being, equity, the climate crisis. And so I think it is important for us to start having that conversation about, you know, we are thinking about how do we support business models that aren't so vehicle-dependent moving forward? And so trying to manage that expectation a little bit is important in my mind. And, you know, sort of thinking it through, we have very high land prices right now. And so I think that gives us the opportunity to do things that make it a bit easier or prioritize business models that aren't vehicle-dependent. And if we do that, and we do see a slight decrease in demand, that brings down the prices and land prices and makes it a bit more viable for those non-fossil fuel-dependent business models, non-vehicle-dependent business models to flourish. So I think it's sort of a win-win all around. I know it's not going to be an overnight shift, but I think that is a conversation that we should start to have. And I appreciate this was about hearing the feedback from businesses and so on. But that is a piece that jumped out at me as sort of next steps and how we process some of this information. Thank you.
I think as Counselor Anderson stands, go ahead.
I'm very pleased to see where we're at in this status of our research efforts. I hate to blow my own horn, but in 2005, I gave a presentation to the Council of the Day advocating just this type of research, this level of nuanced research program, which has been underway elsewhere for quite a while, where people are under pressure, where municipalities are under pressure, just south of the border in the I-5 corridor. There's very interesting research being done on employment lands. And now we're catching up to it, and I'm pleased to see that. I do suggest that with respect to next steps, we've already discussed the application for development permit area guidelines, how they may evolve in future, and sub-area plans. We have one ongoing that I know would be watching closely and listening in on the insights that have been gathered. But I suggest that not only the forestry land strategy, which addresses processing sites, large operational sites, but the forest industry generally. Among the 65 local firms, most of them are small. There are several looking for sites just right now, including large parcels. These are three truck and equipment repair facilities now looking to relocate. And I do respect that the call went out. And I do trust that staff made every effort to reach out to these people. It's the nature of the industry. It's the time of year. It's a lack of being in a habit of being in a dialogue with Economic Development Office, and that hopefully will improve. Nonetheless, we have received two letters within the last two years asking for attention on the part of industry, letters to council. There are then also important locational attributes to understand, not only for present needs, but for future episodic demand events with large investments. And one of these locational preference items is simply land security because large investments need to be made. Finally, I do suggest that it is important to reference the marine action strategy, the forestry land strategy, and other employment lands initiatives that may be undertaken by real estate or planning or other departments simply to complete the picture. And that's what I have. Chair, thank you very much.
Thank you. I saw Counselor French.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. And thank you to staff for this update and for keeping counsel posted on the good work that's being done on employment space and land needs, support where this is going, and the next steps that have been outlined. Thanks.
Go ahead, Counselor Reese.
Thank you. And I also appreciate the work that's been done on this. It does leave me with a couple of sort of outstanding questions that I think are not maybe the discussion today, but I think will come up in the future. One is around the comment in the report about using perhaps ratios between employment lands and density in future sub-area planning. And how, I guess the question for me for the future is, you know, how might those ratios be established? Are they site-specific? Where do they come from? Or is it just, we think this might be a good idea? And the other is parking. And with respect to my colleague, you know, it was quite a common feature of the responses from business that you highlighted in the report. That parking is a concern, and we hear about it all the time. And while I can appreciate one day we might be in a carless economy, I think we're fair ways from that yet, and we're going to have to do something. This topic came up a little bit. It might have been me that raised it actually when we were talking about a development permit application for downtown and the number of parking variances that were part of that or parking cash-in-lieu of parking spaces and what might happen. We saw what happened when the cornerstone building went in, and they had a lot of cash in lieu of parking. And the result was it created kind of a bottleneck in that part of the town that I still get complaints from people about. So I think we are going to have to consider that. And maybe it is not a long-term. It might be more of a medium-term strategy. And I don't know at the moment, and it's a bigger discussion, of course, whether we build a parking garage or repurpose it later or something. But I think to try to ignore it at this point might be a mistake, and we might not get away with that. I'll leave it at that. I think there's obviously more discussion around that going forward. But I did like the report. I might highlight that Counselor Anderson mentions he made a presentation to the council in 2005. That's the council. It was actually the two terms of Ian Sutherland when they had New Directions, the slate. That's the first time I heard about this concept of densifying the downtown to help the downtown businesses. It's only taken about 15 years. And now we seem to be getting positive feedback on it. Some things just don't happen overnight. But that was the first time I heard that in local politics.
Thank you, Counselor Reese. Mayor Elliott.
Really interesting report, and I'm really pleased to see where we'll be at by the end of the year. It feels like a puzzle that we're putting the pieces together on in terms of making more informed decisions that will influence our policy. And this is just one piece of that. So, you know, we're bringing this deeper knowledge and nuance around what our business community needs. And then we have our community climate action plan. And then now we have our our internal team that will be looking at inclusion, diversity, equity, and access. And when I think about how, and then we have our OCP, that sort of big overriding document. And when I think about how all of this knowledge and research starts to play in to how we make decisions about contentious issues like parking and about access and about getting to net zero. It's so helpful to have this more qualitative data, quite frankly, to look at. And then we'll pair that with the pro forma information and then the employment model 2.0. And it's just wonderful to see how all of this information can come together and help inform the development of policy and also our decision-making at the council level. So thanks for getting us on this path and doing this work. And it's a great start. And I look forward to the rest of the work that's happening this year and putting the rest of the pieces together. So thank you.
Thank you. I too will just make a quick comment that I'm happy to support the motion and very grateful to see this work come forward. I think it is one piece of the puzzle that helps provide that qualitative context that was missing in the employment land model that came forward earlier. So this really does help to start fleshing out the details there. There was some really interesting insights, the piece around the cost of land and leases, we know is an issue, but it definitely reiterated to me in this report. And so I'm excited to see the pro forma modeling come forward, that question around density and how much density, and start to put a little bit of, even if it's just qualitative figuring around that, is also helpful. And just want to say thanks to staff as well for laying out the really clear next steps in terms of implementation and how this will be used. They take the line from this Woodside's presentation. That research is great, but it's only as great as the actions that you can take from it. So was very thankful to see from staff kind of the next steps there and how we do love to put this insight that we've gained through this research into action. So thanks so much for doing all that work. Any further comments, Counsel? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much to our staff.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great day.
All right, Counsel, we are set to have a little bit of a break here. And we are running ahead of schedule. So we will give folks until 2:50, 10 to 3, we'll come back and go to our visitor and camping management plan. Oh, yeah. Hello, and welcome back to the District of Squamish Committee of the Whole. We are on item 5.3, Visitor and Camping Management Plan 2021. I am passing this over to Mr. Pageley and Ms. Tidner. Go ahead. Mr. Pageley, you're on me.
Well, that's not a great start. Good afternoon, Mayor Elliott, members of council and members of the community. My name is Dan Pageley, and I am the Acting General Manager of Corporate Services. I'm here today to speak to you on the proposed bylaw amendments and non-policy solutions to mitigate environmental and social impacts as a result of increased seasonal activity all within the Visitor and Camping Management Plan 2021. Secondly, council decision to confirm the scope and direction of the Visitor and Camping Management Plan 2021 and the status of the municipal campground. As a recreation destination, Squamish sees an increase in visitors every summer. Although the vast majority of visitors are respectful, some behaviors, as well as the growing volumes of visitors, lead to environmental impacts. For example, human waste, excess garbage, destruction of sensitive wildlife habitats, and also emergency concerns regarding search and rescue and wildfire risks. While communication and education enforcement are widely regarded as necessary tools to help mitigate the growing impacts of the high seasonal visitation, we recognize these strategies are short-term and that a more comprehensive, long-term solution is needed and is needed to keep with current projected growth throughout the Sea to Sky Corridor. Staff continue to work closely with community, government, and commercial stakeholders to investigate and develop a coordinated, long-term strategy and action plan to this strategy and action plan to this regard. To help manage, excuse me, visitor impact associated with camping, council adopted Camping Bylaw 2679 back in 2019. This bylaw prohibits camping and restricted zones through Schedule A due to their environmentally sensitive and neighborhood proximities and risk of congregation thereby exacerbating impacts to the local residents. The district then considered amendment to bylaw 2679, which would restrict all camping within the municipal boundaries. This was met with concerns from a newly formed group, the Vehicle Residents Association of Squamish, and the amendments were not adopted. As a follow-up, council directed staff at the October 15th meeting to investigate the issue further. Although delayed by the COVID-19 pandemic, staff conducted further research engagement with community stakeholders through 2020, 21 to better understand the issues from a holistic perspective. I'll turn it over to Ms. Keely to speak to some of those stakeholder engagement sessions.
Thank you, Mr. Pageley. So staff interviewed 15 employees across the district in an internal engagement review to better understand the impacts of wild camping. The department areas that were interviewed include emergency services, environment, community development, district facilities, including public works. The conversations were then analyzed to reveal the following themes: community growth and growth in visitation in general, resources and service provision, the fact that there are impacts to capacity in high seasonal times, environmental impacts mostly concerning human waste, but also garbage and wildlife impacts, as well as emergency concerns and some economic impacts. Staff also conducted interviews with and meetings with various stakeholders and government-to-government actors. So this included provincial agencies, local economic organizations, community groups and other governments. Some of the learnings from these conversations include limits to jurisdictional authority and capacity issues related to providing private residential issues on public land. But it also highlighted the ongoing implementation of the district's affordable housing strategy and action and action plan. At this engagement also created opportunities for networking and learning, but highlighted as well the prevalence of seasonal or visitor impacts. Engagement with both internal and external stakeholders identified that the majority of camping impacts are occurring on a seasonal basis and that therefore the biggest area of concern is in managing visitor impacts rather than impacts from year-round residents, such as those sleeping in vehicles. Mitigation strategies should therefore focus on encouraging responsible visitor behavior. Despite the pandemic, 2020 brought a large number of visitors to Squamish. While restrictions currently remain in place and the US border remains closed, it is expected that outdoor enthusiasts will continue to visit Squamish in high numbers this season. Upon review, therefore, staff have adopted the approach to camping management to best support the community as a whole and account for municipal jurisdictional responsibilities and resources. Staff therefore recommend the following two-pronged approach to address impacts on the community: the Affordable Housing Strategy and Action Plan and the Visitor and Camping Management Plan for 2021. Staff would like to highlight quickly some of the successes of the Affordable Housing Strategy and Action Plan to date. And I'm not going to read all of these out, but these are just some of the strategies staff have used in relation to this plan. The Affordable Housing Strategy and Action Plan has also led to specific projects, many of which are listed here. And I do want to highlight that the district also continues to support purpose-built and affordable renting projects in general in order to increase the stock of rental housing. And I'll turn it back over to Mr. Pageley to introduce the camping management plan.
Mr. Pageley, you're on mute.
My apologies again. As Ms. Kinnear acknowledged, unprecedented growth to visitors in the corridor. The objective of our plan is to ensure visitors and residents can enjoy the local built and natural environments that Squamish has to offer. This plan, as we mentioned earlier, will address waste management, environmental stewardship, the availability of camping, safe and responsible visitor behavior. We've also have been working closely with several stakeholder groups and recently started a roundtable discussion with a number of folks that are going to be involved in helping us manage the region when it comes to visitor traffic. Those folks include BC Parks, Flynn Road, Tourism Squamish, Sorica, the biking community, Access Society, the climbing community, our enforcement team, RCMP bylaw and other district staff that may be impacted. When we talk about policy-based strategies, I will give a high-level overview of some of the camp or the bylaws that we will be bringing forward in May, in the May 4th meeting for council's consideration. The first one we'll bring forward is the camping bylaw. And we, at this point, we're going to be maintaining the Schedule A as reflected in the language that, sorry, that reflects the language that's been amended in the camping bylaws that we're bringing forward. The focus really being on camping prohibition in two environmentally sensitive areas. The language will also include verbiage to if the municipal campground is available and open for group bookings, we'll have some language there to support that. We also bring forward the season, I'm sorry, a traffic bylaw. And the nuance here in particular will be seasonal restrictions. These enhanced restrictions are mainly around sleeping on roads and introducing language and define, defining overnight stays to bet for better enforcement. The emphasis here really is on seasonal enforcement. Again, the focus is on directing and ensuring we have resources out during peak time, which typically will be between May and September. And some housekeeping will happen in Park East bylaw 1752. We will remove sections in three and seven. Be consistent with the other few bylaws that we're bringing forward.
Another big part of the plan is non-policy strategies, which involves a collaborative communications plan in partnership with Tourism Squamish. It's the Squamish Visitor Management Roundtable, which has already been mentioned, a seasonal plan coordinator position, temporary community amenities and enhanced bylaw enforcement to make sure we're supporting folks on busy weekends and stat holidays. I'm going to speak now through each of these elements in turn. So the Collaborative Communications Plan, as I mentioned, was, will be in partnership with Tourism Squamish. And the district will develop a communication plan to build on other work that is already being done. This will include updates to current materials to align with the Sea to Sky Destination Development Strategy and the Visitor Education Initiative that is being piloted by Tourism Squamish. Tourism Squamish's initiative includes destination stewards who will be on the ground and interacting with visitors and represent an ideal way to get messaging out to the public about responsible visitor behavior. The Squamish Visitor Management Roundtable will filter the overarching corridor plan down to the community level. At its core, the roundtable is a collaboration with local organizations and governments, which will network throughout the season to share research and the other learnings, adapt cohesively as issues arise and the visitor situation changes, not limited to new public health orders and coordinate strategies and solutions to better support residents and visitors alike. The roundtable has held its first meeting this past week and will continue to work together throughout the season. In order to help manage the plan, the district will hire a seasonal plan coordinator. This person will be based in Recreation Services and will help train recreation staff in order to direct people to available resources. The coordinator will also liaise with internal district staff to ensure efficient and adequate responses to incidences or issues and to adapt accordingly. The coordinator will also capture learnings and evaluate the plan for subsequent seasons, ideally in collaboration with the Squamish Visitor Management Roundtable. Staff are also in the process of identifying key locations for portable toilets and wildlife-proof garbage cans. So these areas are being identified through engagement with community organizations such as the Squamish Access Society, Sorica, Tourism Squamish, BC Parks and the Vehicle Residents of Squamish. These suggestions are also being triangulated or backed up with an analysis of bylaw complaints related to wild camping from 2014 to the present. And finally, the plan includes enhanced enforcement to cover busy weekends and stat holidays. Locations have been identified for parking and campfire ban enforcement based on bylaw complaints. And enforcement will also be coordinated with BC Parks, Flynn Road, Tourism Squamish, Sorica and the Squamish Access Society and other partners to provide support throughout the visitor season to their work. I'll pass it back over to Mr. Pageley now.
Thank you, Ms. Kinnear. In regards to some of those strategies, there are some budget issues or items that we like to just bring forward this time. The extent of bylaw enforcement is already confirmed in our 2021 budget. We will be bringing up towards 1.84 FTEs to support after-hours enforcement typically on Friday, Saturday and Sundays in the evenings. And the seasonal plan coordinator, the 250, 25,000, excuse me, will be required and be brought forward in a 2021 budget amendment for council's consideration at a later time. And the temporary community amenities up to 12,000 will be absorbed in the 2021 operating budget. Next steps. May 4th, as I mentioned, we will bring forth three readings of the three bylaws that we were just discussing recently with you. May 18th, we hope to bring them forward for adoption. The non-policy strategies, as you can see, work will begin very quickly, if not already, developing a communications plan, further stakeholder engagement for temporary community amenities, which is all well underway. We will start additional enforcement to support visitor and camping management plans, particularly starting in May long, June, September for installation of services and portable toilets. And finally, April, October, we will come through those months, we will have regular meetings with Squamish Visitor Management Roundtable. And hopefully we will, the learnings from that on a bi-weekly basis, we will adapt to our visitor management plan as the season grows. Therefore, staffer recommend that staff bring forward amendments to the Camping Bylaw 2679, Traffic Bylaw 2220 and the Park East bylaw 1752 for three readings at the May 4th special meeting. The council also proved the strategies as outlined in Table 2 of the April 27th report to council you're seeing today. And that also council determine municipal campground remain closed except for the event bookings, which will, which eligibility will be determined by evolving public health guidelines. That concludes our staff discussion and I turn it back to the chair.
Thank you, Mr. Pageley and Kinnear. Council questions? Counselor Reese?
Thank you. You mentioned, and I just want to be clear because I thought I might have heard two different things, that additional bylaw staff will be on the weekends. And then did you also mention evenings?
Through the Chair to Counsel Reese, the primary weekend coverage will be after-hours in the evenings. So currently we are running with bylaw coverage seven days a week during the day.
Okay. And the week, so the evenings would be for the weekends primarily and stat holidays?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Actually.
Thank you. I was wondering if this, if the district's strategy will address visitation management issues at popular trailhead sites. Council has received over the last year several letters concerning one of these trail sites and management issues there, namely the Upper Perth area. Will this come into the scope of the, of the strategy?
Through the Chair to Counsel Anderson, absolutely. In fact, currently our enforcement folks have identified that as a hot spot, one that you just mentioned, and we are already having that on our patrol beat.
A second question, if I may. The staff report discusses alignment with the Sea to Sky Visitor Education Strategy and a commitment of staff time. But I'm wondering whether further resources in future might be required. I understand that the Sea to Sky Strategy is operating with grant monies for this year, but it's a long-term program, obviously, and signage isn't cheap. So I'm wondering whether we might contemplate being approached for perhaps our 2022 budget for financial contributions toward this strategy? Is there any speculation on staff's part in this regard?
Through the Chair to Counsel Anderson, thank you for the question. As we mentioned, the, the roundtable group is in, in its early infancy and what we do feel is that there will be some learnings and a longer-term strategy, particularly around messaging and signage. So we are anticipating that there will be some items brought forth in the 2022 budget for consideration for a long-term visitor strategy that would include the things that you mentioned.
Thank you. Finally, I have a question regarding the engagement strategy and the stakeholders identifying them. Mr. Pageley, you did list a number of the stakeholders that are under consideration. Of course, those are general categories as well. But I wondered whether we might highlight the Crown Forest tenures in, within the district boundaries. We have two Woodlot licenses, 28 to 1930, as well as the Squamish Community Forest. And also the Cat Lake area, and I mentioned this in the same context because the Cat Lake Recreation Site is managed by the same folks. Now, these managers, Jeff Fisher is the manager of our community forest, as well as the Cat Lake Recreation Site and Woodlot License 1930. But these folks have substantial experience and insight as well as being on the front lines and being affected. And I just wonder whether we might give some consideration to including them in outreach in stakeholder engagement.
Through the Chair to Counsel Anderson, we appreciate the input and recommendations are noted and we will look at how we could pursue those.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Anderson. Council, further questions? Mayor Elliott?
The 12,000 that's set aside for the, the garbage cans and the toilets, does that include any of the operational time for those? Or is that also just going to be absorbed into our operational plan?
Through the Chair to Mayor Elliott, that will include the operationalization of all those amenities, i.e. weekly dumping or pumping and so forth. That's all built into that.
Thanks.
Council, further questions or comments? Counselor Anderson, go ahead.
Well, I, I note that there is a newspaper article apparently regarding the Cat Lake Recreation Site issue. And I think we must face the fact that this is a very topical issue for the community and, and I think that our efforts at this point, our initiative and the, the, the public can see that we, we are doing things together with our colleagues and partners in the corridor is extremely important. These are going to be long-term issues and I just wanted to, to just note that this is very timely and very important. Thank you.
Thank you. And I have a question. I'm wondering if staff can speak a little bit more to the proposed bylaw changes. It's difficult not having the draft proposed language in front of us for consideration at this time. And the staff recommendation is to bring forward for three readings at the May 4th meeting. So I'm just wondering if staff can speak in a little bit more detail. The staff report speaks to it a little bit in terms of the changes to each of the three bylaws, but just to reiterate how each of those different bylaws that interact with regards to managing the, the impact of visitor camping in our community.
Through the Chair, I will strike that. If Ms. Arthurs would also like to join, I welcome her comments too, but I'll, I'll start. The, we'll, we'll just speak first to the camping bylaw. The, the camping bylaw, some of the points that have been highlighted in that are one, to ensure that we accommodate those, those in our community that are, that are vulnerably, are vulnerable, that may not have a home or residence and they may have to, you know, rent temporary shelters and so forth. So there's clear guidelines in the bylaws that would come forth, whether it's appropriate and not appropriate to erect those particular temporary shelters and the timeline, they can do that. The focus of the bylaw primarily from a overarching perspective is more on seasonal enforcement. That's probably the, the largest change that we're trying to ensure that the issues that are, that were brought forward to us, particularly around residential interface, around visitors, parking or around visitors, parking or, and behaving inappropriately in front of homes and residents and businesses. We will have the tools to, to enforce poor behavior, but at the same time, we'll take a coaching and supportive approach initially to make sure they know where they can safely camp or visit. So that's one of the key pieces in that camping bylaw. The traffic bylaw also is really the biggest change there is around the seasonal pieces that we may be bringing forward, particularly gain around the peak season of summer, where that we do find where visitors are parking in front of residents and, and setting up camp. So this will discourage and also provide tools for enforcement around that type of behavior. Those, those are some of the high points.
Thank you. That's helpful. Council, further questions, comments? I noticed, go ahead, Council Anderson.
Last September, I happened to have been part of a tour hosted by forester Jeff Fisher at Cat Lake Recreation Site. And the object of the tour was to have the look at, firsthand look at management issues, pressures of visitation, all of the catalog of issues that are outlined in the staff report. But this was a tour by the Faculty of Forests, U B C, and I'm just wondering whether there may be some, if you like, academic resources, people that have a substantial focus, research focus on recreation management issues that may be interested parties to follow along and advise on the districts and the Sea to Sky Collaborative's efforts.
Through the Chair to Council Anderson, thank you very much for your comments, and they're noted.
Thank you. I also noticed in the staff report that there's an additional motion than what is currently on our agenda, which includes a decision point around keeping the municipal campground closed at this time. And I'm just wondering if staff can speak to that a little bit.
At this point, I'd like to welcome Ms. Arthur's comments.
Thank you, Chair. So at this point, staff are seeking to keep the campground closed to visitors, campground visitors, the 35 sites that are there. And we would like to repurpose the facility itself for programming opportunity through Brennan Park or through rentals. And staff are currently investigating whether this would be a good location to put a covered space or removable covered space. And the new bylaw includes some better language around campground management as well, so that should the health situation change somewhat, we're able to accommodate group bookings later on in the summertime that we would be ready to go for that. But at this time, we are requesting that we keep the campground closed to rentals.
Thank you. Go ahead, Council Penney.
Yeah, thanks. Just on the municipal campground, I, I believe we have an update to the Brennan Park Fields Master Plan coming for us in the next month or so. And, you know, we've also had some emails requesting other uses for that campground site. And I'm just wondering if, if when we see the Brennan Park Fields Master Plan, if we're expecting that to speak to any of these issues about that, that site.
Go ahead, Mr. Pageley.
Thank you, through the Chair, Council Penney. We will be bringing forward the Brennan Park Master Plan for council's endorsement later this, later in June, excuse me. And we will take into consideration some of these comments that are part of this report.
Thank you.
Council, any further questions, comments? You have free recommendations for us to consider? Anybody would like to move those? Moved by Mayor Elliott. Check made by Councilor French. Anybody want to speak to the motion? Mayor Elliott?
I think the, the approach that staff have raised today really does focus on what our core issue is, and that is the influx of visitors, which we will see despite the attempt at travel restrictions by the province. So I think that makes sense because so much of the complaints we get are about human waste, garbage, illegal parking, and, and not respecting private citizens around busy trailheads, that sort of thing. So I, I really like seeing the expanded bylaw presence, having someone that will focus on this if that budget amendment passes, that coordinator role. And, and I think overall, just seeing that it isn't just us that have recognized where the, the problem is. The Sea to Sky Destination Council, Flynn Road, B C Parks, they're, they're all at the table with us to try and address this issue. And so I'm encouraged that we're going into this summer with more of a plan and, and a deeper level of collaboration to protect both the interests of our community, but also making sure that those who do come here this summer can enjoy our community safely and respectfully and have a good time while they're here. So I do, it was difficult not seeing the bylaws, so I look forward to seeing the amendments when they come forward in May. But I'm generally supportive of the direction we're taking. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Elliott. I saw Councilor French. Go ahead.
Thanks, Chair. And when I think back to our first conversations on this topic, I get really clear about how this issue has evolved significantly through the pandemic in this past year. And this has me more than ever looking at this as a land use issue. We don't allow sawmills to operate in residential areas because of noise and other concerns. Likewise, we wouldn't, we shouldn't be allowing people to ignore our zoning bylaws and let camping take place where noise, waste management, and other concerns are a potential impact for those who are following our zoning regulations. And regulations are useless if we're not prepared to at least accept, to educate people about the regulations and then ultimately enforce our bylaws if education isn't making an effective dis- difference. So we do need to prepare for the upcoming camping season. And I support what staff has brought to us at this point and look forward to see the specific wording in the bylaws that are coming. And I'm prepared to spend the extra $25,000 in the 2021 budget. I support the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Arthur.
Thank you. It is difficult without seeing the, the bylaws, and I look forward to seeing those when they come forward in, in May. But I am supportive of the general direction. I think this represents a far more nuanced approach than has been attempted in the past. And I appreciate how regulations around this particular issue have evolved, and I believe positively over, over time. So I look forward to seeing those come forward, and thank you everyone for the work on this file.
Council Penney?
Yeah, thanks. I, I also support the direction. I think, you know, the, the key change for me compared to some of the earlier iterations is the focus on visitor management. Because I think the identification by that as the primary issue by staff is, reflects the circumstance. And so, you know, there are little bits and pieces that I, I don't think we've quite got it nailed yet, but this is such a complex issue. And, and I think we've finally sort of got down to the, the key element that I'm prepared to support this and, and we can continue to iterate and adjust as, as we move forward. And thank you for stuff on your work on this.
Thank you. I too am supportive of the motions and the general direction that we are taking here. I think there's no doubt that we'll have a seasonal influx despite the current travel restrictions that are perhaps not as clear as they need to be. But those are currently only extended till the end of the May long weekend. And we know based off previous experience that the amount of visitation in our corridor and to our community in particular has grown year over year, and I don't think that'll change this year. I am happy to see the amount of coordination that is happening with Tourism Squamish and their new messaging campaign that's supported this year. And agree that with the direction on the municipal campground, that it is a shame that I think that we'll be closing it. The direction at this time is to close it this year, but appreciate that there is a huge lift in order to be able to open it safely and following public health restrictions. I think that is the best use for our community as a whole is to find some alternative uses for that space in the interim. So happy to support that direction as well for now. Do you know further comments? I will call the question. Any opposed? We need that motion carried. Thank you, staff. Your work on this? We'll see you on the report.
Thank you.
All right, Council, we are now on to item 54, which is the Transit Route South Parks and Free Summer Weekends 2021. We are ahead of schedule, so we'll just give staff a moment to join us. Council, why don't we recess for 10 minutes? We'll come back at 3:35 and give staff a chance to join us. Hello, everybody, Council community. We are back in community as a whole on item 54, Transit Route 5, South Parks and Free Summer Weekends for 2021. And we have Ms. Gunn here with us. Now, pass it over to you. Welcome, Ms. Gunn.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I am Dora Gunn, Transportation Planner with the District of Squamish. I'm assuming that you can all hear me well because I'm not seeing any, looks of confusion. Great. So today, I'm going to be providing a brief update for information on the Transit Route 5 and Free Summer Weekends for 2021. I don't have any slides, just a verbal presentation. So starting with Route 5. In a typical year, the provincial budget is finalized in February, which allows us to firm up our plans for expansions shortly afterwards. This year with the delayed budget, there was a lot of uncertainty about the possibility of expansions, which unfortunately postpones the planning for the Route 5. Once B C Transit let us know that even if they were approved, expansions wouldn't be possible until January 2022. We started working on what would be possible for the Route 5 without expansion. So we are able to add in the two new stops as discussed previously with council. That's the Adventure Center and the Valley Drive Stop, as well as moving the Shannon Falls stop over to Darryl Bay to deal with the congestion issue at Shannon Falls. So it's not an expansion because we're able to make these changes using the same service hours and vehicles as we had previously. It does increase the trip time from 30 minutes to 35 minutes, which makes for a slightly less tidy schedule, but that's really the only downside. Without the expansion bus, we do still have the afternoon service gap, which is from about 2:45 to 6:20 or so. This is very similar to the gap we had previously. Since the time I submitted my memo, I've actually been working with B C Transit. We've managed to find one extra trip that we can add on the weekdays. So there'll now be a bus leaving downtown at 4:55 PM on weekdays and returning half an hour later. So that's at least one trip during that service gap. This isn't possible on the weekends, just the, the weekdays. So the route would run from mid-June to the Labor Day weekend, as in previous years. And running the Route 5 was included in the 2021 budget. And we are able to support the lower overall transit revenue, that's from all the routes, due to lower ridership from the pandemic with funds from the Transit Safe Restart Funding. Moving on to the Free Summer Weekends, the district began providing Free Summer Weekend Service in 2019, originally with financial support from the Sea to Sky Gondola. Council decided to run the Free Summer Weekends again last year in 2020, even though the Gondola wasn't able to support it. And we are proposing to run the Free Summer Weekends again this year. And while the Gondola is in a similar position to last year, so they aren't able to support financially this year, we are able to make up the lost revenue with that Transit Safe Restart Funding. So the Free Summer Weekends would run from the same time period as the Route 5, so that's mid-June until the Labor Day weekend. That's it for my presentation. If there are any questions.
Mayor Elliott, go ahead.
Given the delay in the provincial budget, did, did we consider with B C Transit, maybe looking at subcontracting in the afternoons for like a partnership with a private operator to do some of those routes? Since we can't get the bus?
That has never been a possibility in my experience so far, so it was not discussed. I don't think they, I mean, you might know more than me on this, but I don't believe the, the B C Transit funding would extend to a third party.
Well, we have a third-party operator already.
Rube, under contract for us. I don't know if they would do a second one. I could ask that question if you'd like.
Yeah, and the other thing is, is it possible to use any of the buses that are sitting in reserve? So we usually have a, you know, a standby bus in case other buses break down. So could that be used until it's needed?
They, we already are, we're a bit low in our reserve buses in Squamish. So they don't, they're not usually in favor of that. I have not yet been able to win that argument with them. They like to keep their reserve buses for when they're needed, and they actually are needed when vehicles are out of service.
Okay, given how low ridership is across the province, could we borrow a bus from another municipality that is not using one this summer? Whistler might have one, for instance. So could we temporarily shuffle a bus here so that we could close that gap and, and meet the funding that we, we had committed to earlier this year?
The B C Transit has not offered me any of these solutions. They basically said expansion is not possible. Full stop. So I can ask the question, but I anticipate the answer is going to be no.
But we're not expanding. We're borrowing a bus for June to September until we can buy one of our own as part of the pre-planned expansion, which would happen for January, would it not?
But it would still require additional service hours, which we don't have. If we're trying to fill in the afternoon service gap?
Well, no, your memo says we have 1,500 service hours that can't be implemented until January. But if we borrow a bus and we have restart funds that we haven't spent yet, why can't we do it?
So B C Transit is not implementing any expansions, so any additional service hours that would be required, they're not doing anything in any system until January.
Well, I know what they want, but we have B C Transit restart funds. And can we borrow a bus, or can we sign a third party to fill that afternoon gap? Like I'm, it works because it is, it run, like we've added two stops, and now we just need to fill this afternoon gap to make it workable, and we want to encourage people back to the bus. So what I'm, what I'm trying to figure out is how we make it work. I, I get it, B C Transit doesn't want to give us money, but we have transit money in reserve.
I, I wish I had a better answer for you, but the, the expansions are cost shared. And so we can contribute our portion, and they contribute their portion, and they are not willing to contribute their portion at this point. They're really not willing to do it.
I only want to fill a two, three-hour gap in the afternoons. And potentially, I only want to fill that on weekends. I just am trying to see if we, we can come up with a solution.
I absolutely hear you. I can ask them. I anticipate the answer will be no because of the way the cost sharing works with the expansions.
I, okay, my point is not being, it's not landing, so I'll move on to someone else.
Go, Councilor French, and I'll put myself on it.
Okay, thanks, Chair. Wondering if I could get a refresh of my memory. Has the Monday B C Day holiday in August been included as part of free weekend? Or, and do buses even operate on holiday Mondays? I am so bad with branded schedule. I don't know.
Through the Chair, no problem at all. Through the chair, no problem at all. So typically, our weekends extend to holidays, and a holiday service usually is the same level as Sunday service. So yes, that would be included.
Okay, so then Monday Labor Day would also be included in the scheme. Okay, very good. Thank you.
That is right.
I'll put myself on the list and pick up on Mayor Elliott's line of questioning. Is it possible if we just fund it without the cost sharing? So we have allocated the budget and the hours are small. Can we just go to a third party directly?
I really, really, really want to be able to say yes, but that is not how it works with BC Transit. We cannot do it on our own. Even if we have our own money, it does not work like that. We could hire a totally separate vehicle and have it run the route on its own that we pay for 100% as a different entirely separate non-BC Transit-related contract. So we could do that. We cannot do it through BC Transit.
But we could just do it ourselves.
If we had a vehicle and a driver and wanted to run a route, and as long as BC Transit wasn't massively against it, but I doubt they would be, then yes, that is something we probably could do.
Ms. Glenn Day, I saw your hand.
Thank you, Chair. Hear loud and clear, council, and the desire to look for creative ways.
Good having a hard time hearing you. I think Billy could go.
Thank you. Can you hear me now? How's that?
Better.
Yeah, okay, thanks. Absolutely hear council loud and clear around seeking creative ways to fill this this transit gap. And, you know, staff certainly don't want to say no. The only other thing I can think of that I don't know if it would be palatable is if it went on a political level, if there was a request from from council themselves around be able to shift in light of the pandemic and try to figure things out. I don't know the uptake for that, but if there's a way to work at that level, perhaps that's an option.
Thank you, Ms. Glenn Day. We have councillor Anderson and councillor Peggill.
Thank you. Ms. Gunn, I wonder if you would know offhand how early the bus would be leaving self-bound on its first route? And the reason I'm asking is how we have in the past and how we might coordinate for CS Sky Gondola employees.
Yes, to the Chair. So I do have a schedule in front of me. The first bus would be leaving the Library Exchange at 8:25 in the morning. And we have worked with the gondola on the schedule to make sure it works for them as best as we possibly can. And they're actually very happy with the schedule that we've come up with.
Thank you. I just will also note that the Adventure Center, as well as Downtown Chiefs and Center, are stops for the Squamish Connector. And right now, we don't have a bus meeting them early in the morning for their first route to Vancouver. But this should also be a consideration, those kinds of connections. And that might be relevant on this route for later in the morning for, for example, Stow, Amis Reserve clients. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Anderson. Councillor Peggill, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks. Just understanding creative options. The the money, I understand there's two pools of funding. One is a BC Transit Reserve and the other is BC Transit Restart Funding. Are those both in sort of BC Transit's accounts and they're holding it on our behalf? Or is there monies we have in our bank account that we could reallocate?
To the Chair, they are being held for us, but we are able to use them absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Council, any further questions, comments? Go ahead, Mayor Elliott.
Well, I guess I'm curious, given that we're going to get funding from the province for the under 12s who currently take the bus for free. And now the province has recognized what a leadership position that was, and they've jumped on board. And so we're now going to get compensated for something we've been doing for a number of years. And then also, we didn't really spend our Transit Reserve Funds because we we pulled back on the Route Five last year. So we do have money there. So is it too much to ask to understand what the cost might be to fill that gap either just on weekends or seven days a week if we used a third party?
I am not sure if we would be able to draw on our funding that is in the hands of BC Transit in order to hire a third party. I can look into that possibility. I am going to guess that that might be difficult. I think that the money may need to come from us. Now, it is possible that we could use some of our own money and then draw some extra from BC Transit and, you know, make that happen internally. That might be possible. But the full cost of this third-party bus would be borne by us, and it would not be a BC Transit bus, and they would have nothing to do with it.
So is this time of day a high need time for one of the handy-dart buses?
I cannot comment on the use of handy-dart buses. They are, it has been still relatively well-used, still despite the pandemic. The problem is the service hours. So even if we could find a vehicle, we don't have service hours. So in our contract with BC Transit, we have a certain number of service hours. We don't have any additional service hours. I'd have to steal them. I don't even know that I could at this point. But in theory, I suppose I could cut off some trips off some other routes around town and steal service hours from there. But there's no way to get additional service hours at this point. The next opportunity for service hours is January 2022.
Just in case anyone was curious about what was missing from the budget. Well, I guess I'm interested in hearing if there's a majority of my colleagues that want to pursue a more creative solution to fill this gap in the short term, or whether people are happy to to leave it till next year.
Council, you got it. Councillor Harper?
Thank you. I would like to explore other other options for this. We know that in other routes that the the frequency of of the trips is one of the main things that drives ridership. And having a hole of this size in this particular route is is has to be a deterrent to ridership. So I'd love to figure out a way to to fill that void. And I understand that this request might not be the the simplest to solve, or he would have come to us with it solved in advance. But I do think it's worth spending some more time and and energy to see if we can, if we can get there. So I would support that exploration.
Councillor Peggill?
Yeah, thanks. I would likewise support it. I think, you know, I think we have to be mindful about how much we're taking off other work plans and so on. But even to make it very clear to BC Transit that we want to see solutions and we want them to be creative with us. I think that's that's worthwhile. I think, you know, to the degree that we have to fund this, I do think we have to pay attention to staying overall within our transit budgets and monies we have set aside for that. But we can sort of look to the future too in terms of making that up as we're engaging solutions. But maybe that's down the road a little bit when we understand what some of the options or costs are. And I think it is worth pursuing at least for a little bit and really pushing BC Transit and the province, quite frankly.
Councillor Race and councillor French?
Thank you. I can support looking into it. I I think at the end of the day, my decision would be based on, you know, how much is involved in actually doing this and then whether or not it's really worth it. But for start, having a look at it, I'm fine with that.
Go ahead, Ms. Gunn, and then I'll go to councillor French and councillor Anderson.
I apologize for jumping in in the middle of your discussion. I just wanted to add a comment that my my looking into this won't, I will not be getting a BC Transit vehicle. Like I can look into it for some other vehicle that is totally unrelated to BC Transit, but it would not be on the BC Transit Riders Guide. It will not be in the schedules or next ride. So it will be a totally separate thing that would have to be advertised entirely separately, just to be clear on that during the discussion.
I have councillor French, councillor Anderson, Mayor Elliott.
Yeah, I too am willing to play this game. And and if all that we accomplish is to force BC Transit to reflect on the way that it does things and the box that it puts communities into and the restrictions, the lack of flexibility that exists for leaders like us to make decisions within our own community. I I think that would accomplish something if even if that is all that we get out of taking this on. So yeah, I support what what the mayor is suggesting.
Councillor Anderson, go ahead.
I'm supportive of an investigation. I'll just echo councillor Race. That's as far as I would go, and I'd like to assess from there. I think that there's going to be trade-offs and priorities to set in our management of the transit thing. Although I'm a little bit off-topic, it seems to me that the fact that we don't have early morning service that connects with our only regional passenger carrier is 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 an item to to take up. So there are going to be trade-offs and priorities to set. And so I would like to have another crack if if there's any further investigation of this to reassess it. Thank you.
Mayor Elliott, I saw your hand.
Yeah, just a couple of comments. I wonder if the gondola would like to use its bus to, they had a little van, did they not, to move people around? And they might even want to provide a staff person to do that afternoon run for us if we cover the operating cost. So I just, there's something in it for them. And so I I would like to see if there is a bit of a solution and 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 then work from there. And then I know they can't support us financially, but maybe there's a more creative way they can support us this summer to help fill that gap, even if it's filling a bit of that gap, you know? Maybe it's not that every half-hour service, but at least to have maybe, you know, that that extra service that you found, Ms. Gunn, and and a couple of others, just to sort of help people get back and forth to the gondola. That would be great. And and I just want to say that it's it's is primarily how the province funds transit, BC Transit, rather than BC Transit. So it's really difficult to fund a transit system one year at a time. And unless you can see those expansions and have that commitment to expansion two to three years ahead, it makes it very difficult for us. So that's where advocacy has to be, is to MOTI to say, we need to be able to plan our transit expansion oh, two, three years, not one year at a time. That is ridiculous when you're trying to get down to that 15-minute service. And so, so I don't want to point the finger at BC Transit. They're working within the confines of of how the province funds transit for BC Transit communities. Thanks, Ms. Gunn, for brainstorming with us on this one. Do I need to, I should move a motion that staff investigate a a solution to fill the afternoon gap on Route Five between June and September?
Seconded by councillor Harper. I'll also make a few comments. I am generally just excited to see the Route Five come back this year and that we are supporting Free Summer Weekends again this year. I think those are fantastic initiatives. We had previously talked about this expansion to Route Five as a priority for this year in our previous discussions around our transit system. So appreciate that there are constraints that have been set by the provincial budget, which are frustrating that process. But I do think it is important for us to try and find a way to fill it, especially given that that is your like height return time from 2:00 to 6:30 or whatever that gap is. So appreciate staff's willingness to try and find creative solutions and brainstorm with us here and know that it is challenging the framework that BC Transit is working in. But if if there is something that we can pull together, even just put one or two buses to fill that four-hour gap and get people back, I think it will make the route that much more successful in the long term. So we'll be supporting the motion. Any further comments? Go ahead, councillor French.
Yeah, so I just said in my initial comments, I focused on BC Transit. And I'll just add that the message also is directed at the provincial government, probably even more so than than BC Transit. I support the motion.
Thank you. I'll call the question. Any opposed? All right, councillor Harper. Any opposed? Being nine, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Gunn. And with that, council, I will entertain a motion to terminate. Root by councillor French, seconded by councillor Harper. Well, I'm right there, councillor, that's right. I will call the question. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, everybody, for a very